...with us from First Presbyterian Church to lead us in our invocation. And then we will have our Pledge of Allegiance by Palmer Stroup. He's a Paducah Tillman High School sophomore.
Let us pray. Oh God of power and might, we give you thanks for those who have offered to serve as elected leaders in this community. May those who have been granted positions that affect the lives of others in our community realize the power that has been given them and gain the wisdom to use that power with care and humility. May they realize the good results that can come when they exercise power as shared power, shared among their elected peers and shared with the community they serve. Through the decisions and actions that come from their shared power, may they help bring about peace in the midst of conflict, clarity in the midst of confusion, goodwill in the midst of contention, understanding in the midst of discord, healing in the midst of brokenness, and wholeness in the midst of division. In the name of the one who came to bring peace on earth and goodwill to all people, we pray. Amen.
Palmer? Come on up. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I have, are there any additions or deletions tonight, City Manager?
There are none.
I have a presentation tonight. If Mr. Robert C. Manchester will come up front, and would you like to bring your family up with you? No? So we had a wonderful reception earlier for Mr. Manchester as he retires from serving on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Mr. Manchester was appointed to the Paducah Area Transit Authority Board for the first time in 1980. He served two terms on this board, and then he was appointed to the Paducah Planning Commission on September the 22nd, 1987, by Mayor Vitarese. He was elected chairman on January 16th, 1989. Mr. Manchester has heard approximately 1,479 cases before the Planning Commission as his tenure as chairman. Mr. Manchester has faithfully kept his training up to date as a planning commissioner and has guided the Planning Commission through some difficult applications. His leadership on the Planning Commission has been exemplary. So today, I am proud to present you, Mr. Robert C. Manchester, with the Mayor's Award of Merit. Thank you so much.
From the bottom of my heart, I thank you. I'm proud to have served Paducah. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Would any of the commissioners like to say something?
I just saw you out in the hall. I want to thank you again for your service to our community. I know we are a better community because of it, so thank you. It's a long time.
Often people, I'm sorry. Often people wonder how they can, how they can serve and give back, and the various boards that we appoint from here is great, but then those folks with that skill set and for 26 years, that's a long time. And just over hearing the conversation downstairs, you ran a tight ship, so we're all the better for it. Thank you, sir, for your service.
I was, I will echo that. He did run a tight ship. I've watched it from both sides, and there are going to be some big shoes to fill in that, in that chairman's position, but thank you again and congratulations.
And thank all the commissioners that are here tonight that have, that served with Mr. Manchester and will continue on with the good work at the Planning Commission. Thank you. Tonight, we have Andrea Underwood here. She would like to give us a report on Christmas in the Park.
Good evening. Thank you all for the opportunity, because not only does it give us a chance to bring you up to date on an event that occurs throughout several weeks in the community, but it also gives us an opportunity at Paducah Power to thank the dozens and dozens of volunteers and people who help us to pull off this event. We could not do it without them, so it's nice to have this public opportunity. We had another great season. This is the 17th year for Christmas in the Park, and I will say this, it was not an easy season. It seemed like we had a lot of strikes against us with the weather this year, a lot of really cold nights where people didn't want to come out. We had some nights where the park was closed, but in the end, we did manage to have a good return, and we collected right at 50,000 pounds of canned goods and $37,500 in cash donations. And that's actually the second highest amount of cash donations we've had. Now, over the course of the last 17 years, we have come, this year, we came within $6,000 of hitting the half million dollar mark, and in terms of money donated. Last year, we did surpass the 500,000 pound mark in food, so that's a lot of food and money that's contributed over the years, and we owe that to the people of this community. So we're proud to be a part of the holiday tourism here. We take that very seriously, and we know it's a family tradition for a lot of folks, so we work hard every year to try to make it the best event that we can. We will begin planning in the next few weeks for next year's event and be looking for ways to make it better. One of the things that we hope will be back next year, this year, for the first time, we had carriage rides out there. John's Past Carriage Company was out there, and that seemed to go really well, so we hope that they will be back. Bike World had a bike ride out there where the riders lit up their bikes, and it was another unique perspective that folks got of the lights, and that was a lot of fun, so we hope that they will do that again. And we will be looking for sponsors of lighting displays. I do want to give a shout out to our schools this year that participated in the school challenge, because they literally, they had very few days to collect, because they had so many snow days, and everything they collect during that challenge goes to Christmas in the Park, and they came up with 15,000 pounds of food in just a few days. And our friends at Tillman had over 4,000 pounds of that, so they did an excellent job, as did all of the other schools. So we're really appreciative for everything that the kids do, and our hospitals, what they do with the stuff, the truck, it all comes together, and we are really grateful for all of the help and proud that it's going to go to those three agencies which really need it this year: Family Service Society, Salvation Army, and Paducah Cooperative Ministry.
And I want to especially thank Eric and all the hard work that he does for Christmas in the Park.
He, yeah, for folks who don't know, Eric Beerkant is a PPS retiree, and he literally, with the help of the Class D inmate program, erects the displays out there, keeps it running. If a display goes out, he's the one who gets the call and gets up and goes out there and makes sure that everything is taken care of. So we really owe him a lot. He does a lot for this community during the holiday season, and we couldn't be more proud of him.
Is it too early to tell them about next year, Pam? Well, I've asked Eric to be the grand marshal of the Christmas parade next year, and I'm just terrible about keeping secrets. And, and he was, he's really a very, he doesn't like the limelight kind of guy. He just likes to get out there and make the park look great for Christmas in the Park, and he doesn't want people to tell him what a good job he did.
He does not. He's very modest, but I think that's a wonderful honor.
And he did agree to do it. He said you and his family talked him into it.
Yeah. He, I think that's a wonderful honor, and I'm pleased that you've asked him to do that.
I'm pleased he's doing it. Thank you.
Anything else?
Any other?
Was it fun? Fun? We were there the night of Bike World, and it was fun.
Yeah, it is, and for a lot of folks, it's just a family tradition, and they go through every year, and if they have little children, chances are, they go through multiple times. But we like the fact that it is a tradition for them, that it makes the holidays fun, and that it's just a good, clean, family activity. It doesn't matter if you're two or you're, you know, 102, it's a good activity, so.
It also is a great example of everybody doing a little something, and at the end of it, you look at it, and it's a huge impact, and everybody had a part to play. I think that's, that's the way to go.
I agree. Thank you all.
We're really proud to have Patrick Sadler and the Paducah Tillman Band of Blue. We have three of them here tonight, and they have several of their, see, it's five of your 13 awards that you have here tonight. So I've got a special recognition for Patrick, and then I would like for him to come up and talk a little bit about what it was like to be in Florida at the Gator Bowl and to be the winner. And, I mean, I know this has been a real rush since you've been back. I know you've gotten Senator Leaper recognized, the Tillman Band of Blue in the Senate, and the House of Representatives also. Mr. Watkins recognized you, so it's been really great, and you've done such a good job. You're such a good leader. So tonight, I want to present you with a Duke of Paducah. To all to whom these presents shall come, greeting, know ye that Patrick Sadler is named a Duke of Paducah. I hereby confer this honor with all the rights, privileges, and responsibilities thereto appertaining. In testimony where I have caused these letters to be made patent, and the seal of the city to be herein to affix, done at Paducah on the 28th day of January in the year of our Lord 2014. So thank you for being a real Duke of Paducah, and you've proven yourself. So would you like to say a little bit about your experience?
Sure. First, I want to say I am honored, and I'm floored, and flabbergasted, I guess you can say, to get this award, but I really appreciate the award, and thank you so much for all you do for us. I'm so proud of my students. They worked really hard this year, and the work is not over, and I have three of them with me, so I'm going to introduce them. This is Eric Robertson over here on the end here, and we are, yeah, come on up, Eric, and bring the trophies too, Eric.
You're the rock star.
That'd be really good. Stand in the middle, since you got the biggest one right there. That'd be really good. And so Eric is an awesome leader. He's a senior this year, and he plays saxophone. He's a great leader for us. And then we have our brass captain is here with us tonight. That's Cory Nass. We're going to ask Cory to come on and bring a few of those trophies. Cory is also a senior this year. These guys are great leaders for us. And then we have our drum major who led the way, and that's Rhynisha Garrett, and she also have a few trophies. We won about 13 trophies. We had three plaques and $10,000, so we're very proud of the, of the band, our students. The weather in Florida is much different from it is down here, and we enjoy that, the weather down there. When we got down there, we got an opportunity to see other bands from across the country, and they made a big impact, but we were very proud of our students, because, you know, our guys worked hard even through the Christmas break. We was out there practicing, you know, and it was very cold, kind of like it is tonight, one of those nights and one of those days. They was out there practicing, very minor words of complaint, because they knew while we were there, and so they worked really hard, and I really feel like they, they got what they deserved, so I'm very proud of them. It was kind of surreal down there, because it was a big stage, and when we performed at the Gator Bowl, it was probably a lifetime experience, something that I'll never forget, and I know my students will never forget. So we appreciate all the support from the community, from the school board, and local businesses that really helped us to get there. We raised close to $80,000, and we're just very proud of the result. So thank you so much. We appreciate you, and we are humbled by this experience. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
And we have a basketball game in about 10 minutes, so we're on our way out. Thank you so much.
Okay, we'll go on to our meeting. Commissioner Abraham, you have the minutes, please.
I move that the readings of the minutes for January 14, 2014, City Commission Meeting be waived, and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the City Clerk be approved as written.
Second. Everyone had a chance to look over those.
Yes.
City Clerk.
Mr. Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Gault.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kaler.
Aye. Okay, we'll go on to appointments. Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners and jointly with the McCracken County Judge Executive, I hereby appoint the following: Drew Hewlett to replace Susan Ebersabell; Lena Thompson to replace Jim Siegler; Alexandria Sherwood to replace Hal Sullivan. As members of the Paducah McCracken County Convention Center Corporation, these terms will expire January 1st, 2015.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the action of Mayor Kaler and jointly with the McCracken County Judge Executive in appointing Drew Hewlett, Lena Thompson, and Alexandria Sherwood as members of the Paducah McCracken County Convention Center Corporation.
Second.
City Clerk.
Mr. Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Gault.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kaler.
Aye. Whereas I move that the Board of Commissioners appoint Roger Truitt to replace Randy Warmuth, whose term has expired, as a member of the Electric Plant Board. This term will expire February 6, 2018.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the action of Mayor Kaler in appointing Roger Truitt as a member of the Electric Plant Board.
Second. City Clerk.
Mr. Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Gault.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kaler.
Aye. I just want to thank all the people that have agreed to serve on these two boards and on every board that we have in the city of Paducah, and appreciate their service. It's very important, and it's a serious matter to serve on these boards. Thank you. We'll go on to motions. Commissioner Wilson.
I move that the following documents be received and filed. Number one, insurance certificates, Danny Copensun's Excavating LLC, Lonnie Wiggins Concrete, Lee &amp; Associates, D&amp;D Construction of Paducah, and Jim Smith Contracting Company LLC. Continuation certificate of fidelity or surety bond policy for Jim Smith Contracting Company LLC. Notice of cancellation for the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah, Kentucky for January 21st, 2014. Commissioners deeds for 1006 South 11th Street. Deeds for 902 South 5th Street for Senior Properties LLC. 1216 Salem Avenue for George Lee Payne. Contracts and agreements. Police Department Agreement for Uniform Services with Bluegrass, one year. Renewal Agreement with Danny Copensun's Excavating LLC for 2012-2013 Equipment Rental. KLCS 2012-2013 Safety Grant Award Notice. Paducah Area Community Reuse Organization Financial Statements and Independent Auditors' Report for the year ended June 30th, 2013. City of Paducah, Kentucky Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the year ended June 30th, 2013. Paducah Water Works Financial Highlights for Period Ending November 30th, 2013.
Discussion. City Clerk.
Mr. Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Gault.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kaler.
Aye. Municipal Orders. Commissioner Abraham, please.
Upon the recommendation of the City Manager, the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah order that the personnel changes on the attached list be approved.
Second.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm very pleased to recommend for your approval tonight's personnel actions. Among them are a couple of well-deserved promotions in the police department. I'd like to invite Chief Barnhill to come up and tell us a little bit about that.
Evening, Mayor and Commissioner. Thank you. I just want to take just a couple of seconds real quickly to highlight two employees up for promotion tonight. Assistant Chief Brian Krueger is a 15-year employee of the department, served in every facet of the department, a lot of experience, a lot of knowledge that he brings to us in the new role. And Captain Brian Krueger, I'm sorry, Captain Brian Laird, is a 12-year employee that also has extensive experience in both sides of the House for us, and looking forward to what they can provide us in the future.
Thank you.
We will have a formal ceremony and recognition for them in a later time, but I just want to take the opportunity in front of you all to recognize them.
As soon as we vote on this, just stay up there, okay?
Okay.
City Clerk.
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Gault.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kaler.
Aye. Okay. You're officially have your new positions, and I appreciate you all and your exemplary services. We told Mr. Manchester also that applies to you all, and I know that you will do a wonderful job for the city of Paducah and for the citizens of Paducah.
Thank you very much. I'm really excited about the opportunity, just like I told the chief when we met a week or so ago. I know Captain Laird is as well.
And, you know, and I know that I do, as well as all the commissioners, you know, we all want a safe community, and you all do a good job of keeping it safe. Commissioners, do you all have anything to?
Just echo what you said, and again, congratulations, guys.
Thank you very much.
Would you like to shake hands? We'd love to shake hands.
Congratulations. 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 Thanks for your service. Congratulations.
Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute an application, all documents necessary for a reimbursement grant in the amount of $21,000 through the Kentucky Office of Highway Safety for presentation of the Heads Up, Don't Be Intexticated program by the Paducah Police Department be adopted.
Second.
Captain Hodgson, do you want to speak on this?
Yeah, just very briefly, if I could, Mayor and City Commissioners, I'm honored to speak to you tonight. This program started about two years ago with, unfortunately, a tragic accident that happened to a young woman in our community, partnered with the Paducah Police Department in our effort to reduce the number of collisions that we have in the city. And one of the things we realized was we were, we were doing a good job of writing tickets, but we weren't doing a good job of educating the public about the risks that were, were entailed in texting and driving and distracted driving in general. We were able to partner with the Cole Tharp family and present Heads Up, Don't Be Intexticated program. It's a 45-minute program geared to high school students and civil service groups and municipal groups. We've done them for some of the companies, some of the corporations in our community. Excuse me, we've spoken at several high schools in the community. We've spoken at Tillman, St. Mary's, and McCracken County. We've started to, we spoke at the Kentucky Lifesavers Conference in Louisville, which is a statewide conference on highway safety. And ever since we presented there, we've gotten requests from across the state to speak. One of the limiting factors for us is the funding to, to travel to Ashland or the other side of the state. We feel like this is an important message, and it's, it's the right thing to do. If we can change people's behavior through education, it's a chance for us to save lives, and we think we're uniquely positioned with this program to do that. So we would ask for, for your support.
Thank you. Any comments?
Well, I know I worked with you on scheduling it for the new page for their employees for a safety training, and they all just were so complimentary of the presentation and the message that you delivered, so thank you for what you do on it.
And, you know, that's one thing, I mean, I applaud Chief Barnhill and the police officers that work with you, because you all are very proactive about going out into the community and communicating with the citizens, as well as presenting programs that really do affect the safety issues here in the city. So I appreciate you doing that.
Great, Mayor. Thank you for recognition. I would like to, you know, applaud Captain Hodgson. This has kind of been his baby from the very beginning. He, as well as two, three officers within the department, have kind of just taken a general, small idea that come from that tragedy and really have, have made this grow, you know, leaps and bounds above, above what we thought. He mentioned a statewide recognition, but it's also, you know, becoming a national recognition. I know he spoke to a couple of training agencies, and one of them in Florida, so we just don't know where this will go, and we appreciate your support in doing this.
I think cell phone use is an addiction, don't you? Don't you? I do.
Oh, no doubt.
I confess. It is, I mean, it's like, you know, I've, I made a resolution to not use my phone this year in the car. It's really hard to not do that, and you, it's like you just reach for it before you know what you're doing, so it's...
That's, that's the same reasoning the students use at Tillman. I can't help it. I just, it's, it's right there. I gotta check, you get a, what time is it?
Maybe a habit's a better word to use, anyway. Thank you. Thank you. City Clerk.
Mr. Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Gault.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kaler.
Aye. Ordinances introduction. Commissioner Rhodes, please.
I accept that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting a donation of a parcel of real property known as Independence Park located at 114 Forest Circle, Paducah, McCracken County, Kentucky, and authorizing the mayor to execute a deed of conveyance and all documents related to same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah hereby accepts a donation of a parcel of real property known as Independence Park located at 114 Forest Circle, Paducah, McCracken County, Kentucky, from Independence Bank Shares Incorporated. This property is valued at $225,000. Further, the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a deed of conveyance and all documents relating to same to transfer the real property to the city of Paducah.
Second. Mark.
Mayor Commission, we're happy to be here. We have a couple of representative, well, we have a representative from Paducah Bank, Scott Johnson, and the attorney, Philip Little, who drew up the documents for you. This is our opportunity to thank Independence Bank for their donation of Independence Park, and it's a really nice opening into the Wallace Park and the new middle, middle school and all that area. It, it sets off very nicely what we've got, and I know I've got friends who are also use it, out there using the park on a daily basis, and, and it's just, it's been a nice donation, and I think it's like, sets off the neighborhood very well.
It does, and it's such a wonderful little area there for children to play. It's a passive park. They can get out and run and...
It's enclosed and safe from that perspective, so I told Commissioner, excuse me, Alan, Commissioner Rhodes, that the one, the best thing I think this year is, now, it may not be from all your perspectives, but the best thing is we won't have a clutter of "Vote For Me" signs out there this year. So that corner will be cleared, at least our portion of it will be cleared of electoral signs.
That was a good spot, too.
It was. Well, come see me if y'all need, no. But anyway, we're, we're happy to accept it, and, and it'll be, it's not going to be difficult to maintain. They, Ray Blackenson did an excellent job on the construction, as well as the work from JSA.
Once again, thank you, Scott, and the Board for that decision.
Thanks to Independence Bank. I think you might have said the wrong bank while ago, but thank you to Independence Bank for your...
Did I say the wrong one? I'm sorry. Independent, sorry. There you go. What else is new?
All right. Well, thank you so much. We're going to vote on this?
No. We have another introduction on the...
Okay, Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Chapter 7 Parks and Recreation of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That section 70-32, public parks, playgrounds, and recreational areas available to the park, available to the public, is amended to include Independence Park located at 114 Forest Circle. This ordinance also renames Henry Clay Park as Albert Jones Park and renames the Greenway Trail to the Clyde F. Bowles Greenway Trail.
Second. That's, that's a little cleanup that we have to do whenever we have some of this, and it's been a couple of years since we had done any cleanup on that.
Thanks to Independence Bank. I think you might have said a wrong bank while ago, but thank you to Independence Bank for your-
Did I say the wrong one? I'm sorry. Independence, sorry. There you go. What else is new?
All right. Well, thank you so much. We're going to go on to introduction.
No, we have another introduction on the-
Okay, Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Chapter 7 Parks and Recreation of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That Section 70-32 Public Parks, Playgrounds, and Recreational Areas Available to the Park, Available to the Public is amended to include Independence Park located at 114 Forest Circle. This ordinance also renames Henry Clay Park as Albert Jones Park and renames the Greenway Trail to the Clyde F. Boils Greenway Trail.
Second. That's, that's a little cleanup that we have to do whenever we have some of this, and it's been a couple of years since we had done any cleanup on that with the change to Albert Jones Park and the donation that we had accepted for the Greenway Trail from the Boils family wills.
I still love driving down Monoc Road and seeing that bank, too, Scott. It's, it's really beautiful. All right. Thank you, Mark. Hey, City Manager's Report.
All I have is request executive session tonight on two items. One, personnel. Secondly, land acquisition.
Personnel.
Collecting bargaining.
Okay. Okay. Any mayor? I don't have any comments. Commissioner comments tonight? Well, we've got a nice event coming up Friday.
Oh, well, the Chamber's 75th anniversary. If you want to give me that opportunity, yes, we will be celebrating 75 years of the particular chamber of continuous service to the community Friday night, so we're sold out, but call me if you need a ticket.
That's something to be proud of, 75 years.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Anyone else?
No.
We have any public comments? Okay, who has the executive session? Commissioner Abraham, please. Thank you.
I move that the Board go into closed session to discuss, discussion of matters pertaining to the following topic: Future sale or acquisition of a specific parcel of real estate as permitted by KRS 61.8101B, collecting bargaining with public employees as permitted by KRS 61.8101E.
Second. City Clerk.
Mr. Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Gault.
Aye.
Mr. Rose.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kaler.
Aye, and we will not be coming back for any decisions, so thank you. Meeting's adjourned.